I can't send it.
I'm just curious. It's wonderful if I should walk out or not.
I don't have a, I don't have a cheat sheet just because time ran away from me. And the only thing I needed to add was that Deion Brown will be doing the pledge tonight. She's from class four and she works in internal audit.
Thank you.
Yeah, when I saw Mr. Darby said he was going to be at six o'clock. We got a quorum, or one, because we have the public hearing. You don't need a quorum for public hearing.
No, we're doing special finance.
Oh, we got a special finance committee.
One, two, three, four, five.
We got six.
Is he going to join by soon?
Here, finishing up a meeting, but should be in shortly. Good evening to all of you. It's 6:01 and we're going to start our special finance committee, of which we're all, all members of council are part of this meeting. And so at this time, a part of this committee, at this time, we are going to begin a discussion on the Charleston Animal Society funding. So the administrator asked that we put this on the agenda. So, Mr. Administrator, I'm going to let you kind of walk us through where we are with this.
Very simply, Mr. Chairman, there were some, there were some proposals of funding the Animal Society without a contract, and I was not comfortable with that. So we, the attorney and I spoke with you about making it an agenda item.
Yes, and in the interim, there is a contract. So we do have the stand-in for Ms. Hamm. I believe that there is a contract that she was extremely satisfied with. So can you speak to that?
There is a proposed contract that's being negotiated with the Animal Society. I think we prepared the contract. They made some provisions to it, sent it back to us at the end of last week. And we've, our office has been reviewing it, and I believe we have a meeting scheduled with their attorney Monday or early next week to continue going through that process.
Right, I spoke with Ms. Hamm today. She said that based on the tenets of the, the contemplated contract, that it contained everything that satisfied, you know, all of the concerns of council as it relates to, and potentially the administrator, based on the request that we were given after a meeting that we had a few weeks ago, that there would be itemized invoices per animal based on prices. I'm coming to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm coming to you. Itemized invoices of animals particularly disaggregated by municipality, the unincorporated areas, to address, you know, that portion that would be specifically to Charleston County. And so there is that agreement that the attorney herself is satisfied with. Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moody.
I guess I, just for the life of me, I'm not sure what, excuse me, what there is to discuss. This is, in my opinion, largely an administrative matter with a, with a vendor who has not ever been transparent, refuses to provide simple documentation we've always requested, secretly records council members' meetings with them, then lies about these meetings in the media and on social media, limits our access, our auditors' access to their records, and then starts screaming when we poke around and ask questions. This is not somebody I want to be in business with. And then further asks us to keep paying them or restart paying them, and then has the further nerve to ask us to negotiate with municipalities on their behalf. So I, you know, I like to get into numbers and I'm prepared to when it's my turn, but I just, I guess I just wanted to start the meeting by asking, why is this even on the agenda? I just, I don't understand why we want to be in business with people like this.
Thanks, sir.
We met with Councilman Darby, well, Councilman Darby is here. Councilman Darby facilitated a meeting with the administrator, the attorney, myself, Mr. Sass, members of the Animal Society, in order to figure out what's going on and to come to a place where we are able to put on the table at least, you know, those things that created a breakdown in the relationship, the business relationship, the transactional relationship, and just the interpersonal relationship. We also recognized that when we left that meeting, the sentiment was moving forward and creating a pathway where certain levers and systems would be in place that, that could potentially open the door for doing business with them again. And from that meeting, Mr. Darby asked me specifically to get with Mr. Tooten, which I did. And so all of the things that we're going through now are things that were action items from the meeting. So when asking, I don't know how this got on the agenda, I'm just trying to outline a process that created where we are right now. When I got with Mr. Tooten that week, you know, finally, you know, I said, well, when talking with council persons, you know, I learned that it was not as open and shut a directive as just write them a check. Because council persons that I spoke with also had embedded asks or things that they required, like invoices, or they wanted, you know, more open, transparent numbers as it related to per animal and the cost associated with different things as it relates to the animal treatment, and the aggregate bill that has, you know, subsequently just been sent to Charleston County in one lump sum as an invoice with nothing else. And so the sentiment was, we wanted to move forward. Everybody seemed to be in a healthy place of agreement to come up with some, with some either agreement with Charleston County or facilitating at least a conversation, not to say that we are the broker of that on their behalf, but facilitating a conversation with the mayors of Charleston, North Charleston, and Mount Pleasant. And I agreed to do that, and we do have that meeting scheduled. And so at the same token, to discover who needs to pay what, because it is a consensus, I think, among everybody, even the municipalities, that everybody needs to pay their fair share. Now, based on the things, after we sent through the clerk a letter to the Animal Society somewhere around February eighth, ninth, tenth, in that ballpark, that we wanted to find out, you know, those bulleted things that I listed that they would provide for us, and they provided everything on the list that we asked, including the per animal costs. Now, we do recognize that when we had conversations with our attorney, with the administrator, and Ms. Salisbury was there as well, that there were some questions that still remained. I said that based on the directive that we were given, either to come up with a stopgap or to create at least a time period where funding could ensue until we had the opportunity to overwhelmingly figure out some of those other pieces, like meeting with the municipalities, was there going to be an intergovernmental agreement, was there going to be each individual municipality and/or the county entering their own separate agreement? And so even in those exchanges, there were documents that the county on its own had procured or received from the Animal Society or somehow acquired that were in conflict with some of the, the documents that we had recently received. And with that being the case, I then said to Mr. Tooten, I said to Ms. Hamm, that at this point, that is not on the table for us to litigate. When we got to a place of having meetings with the Animal Society and coming up with beyond the stopgap, because we were just asked to, or tasked with, from the meeting that we had with, facilitated by Mr. Darby, to come up with an interim agreement that would enable us to at least pay for services that were being rendered or still being rendered, so we were told animals still being brought in, that we could begin, you know, to at least compensate the Animal Society for that. And so that's what I was doing. And so there was no finality. And in fact, in the interim, Ms. Hamm discovered that the Animal Society was sending at least contractual redlined edits to her, but there was some filter issue that precluded her from receiving it on our end. I think, Ms. Salisbury, you were a part of some of those, and Mr. Tooten was a part of those conversations as well. As, I'm not speaking on her behalf, I'm just giving a rundown of some of the things that happened that were reasonable in our mindset, that when some information seemed not to have been delivered, it was not based on, on the Animal Society not, not trying to forward the information to us, it was something within our own firewall. Mr. Werman.
I think maybe, with that being said, you'd mentioned that, that there are sort of stipulations and stuff that would be attached to the stopgap money. I think maybe laying those on the table so everybody's sort of talking on the same page would be helpful, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so we did send all of that information to each member of council. And if you can, do you have that information in front of you as a part of the?
I do not.
Okay, I'll pull it up. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, since he doesn't have the information, and Ms. Hamm is not here, and I think he says next week sometime, y'all supposed to get together to, to do all the editing and then come back with something? Is that, if I understood you correct, that's what you said in your opening statement?
Yes, sir. Our office is meeting with the attorney for Animal Society next week to go over provisions in the contract or proposed contract, which I think is the more recent, final, not final contract, but not the interim contract we're talking about now. Something longer.
May I suggest, if it's going to be next week sometime, we all come up with something that's going to be more long-term, we maybe take this back up when all the information is out. Because whatever, if you do something tonight, it's going to be superseded by something next week at, at, at the other finance committee meeting. And so I want to get it all, you know, in, in context. And, and I have said, and I've talked to other council members, if they are willing to give us information, the, you know, how the animal's being taken care of and billing us per animal versus just a one set amount, that's something I'm interesting in, but interested in, I'm sorry. But to just say stroke an amount right now, you know, you know, without having information, I think, you know, that's getting the cart before the horse. But I will say this, the animals that they are serving now, what precludes them from giving us an invoice on what they've already done to look at? Does, did anybody ask them, hey, look, how many animals you took in from the unincorporated areas only, and what kind of service? I think they should have that on file right now. And if they do have that on file, then that's something they could bring before council and then says, hey, this is what we've done for the last two months, are you willing to pay us for the last two months? And then going forward. This might take, because I think, you know, listening to the gentleman, the lawyer there now, they are waiting to get together to finalize something. And so I would like to see a final version, just, you know, so that way we won't have to do one today and then come back next Thursday and do a final version.
Well, it would not be coming, coming back next Thursday to, to do a final version. When I spoke with Ms. Hamm, whatever we did today or whenever, because that version is more for another budget cycle, maybe. She was proposing, or based on the conversation that we had, that whatever we are doing would take us through the end of the budget. And I think that was in writing sent to all council persons. You know, again, none of this is.
So can we just ask them to send us an itemized bill of what they have done so far? And then, you know, we can have staff review it. And if it's in order, staff and commissioners, these bills are in order, and we can pay them for what they have done, because if they have done work, I want to pay them for what they have done. But I just don't want to pay them a blanket amount of $200,000 a month, $50,000 a month, $25,000 a month. I want to pay what we are actually getting service for.
Mr. Boiski?
If the attorney doesn't have it with him, can we take a pause for you to get it? How hard is it to get it? Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly what document y'all are referring to, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm referring to the contemplated contract that Ms. Hamm is working on right now, that she told me today that you would have queued up, because it's the same document that they're discussing on Monday. That's what I'm talking about.
I do have that document.
Right. And so that's what I'm talking about. And so beyond that, I also said that there was the stopgap sort of desire, based on what Mr. Darby charged us to do at the meeting in January. So there's that, right? And so that's a separate matter. And so that's what Ms. Hamm, Mr. Tooten, and I were trying to get to a place that we could begin to come up with at least what the path would be. You know, there would have to be an interim agreement, not that agreement that you're working on. An interim agreement that also bullet, that bulleted list of, you know, they would have to provide an itemized invoice, that was one of the things on there. They would have to also disaggregate those things that came from Charleston, North Charleston, Mount Pleasant, the unincorporated area, so that potentially we're only paying for those things coming from the unincorporated area. So there were a list of things that all of council has already received. Mr. Boykin?
A couple of things. We are right now, I'm sorry, Mr. Sass?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. We're where we are right now because we had a terrible contract that existed at least since 2019. It was essentially a gym membership. Paid the same amount every month regardless whether you go to the gym or not. And that's terrible. I've been in government for almost 30 years. I had never seen an arrangement of a governmental body with a nonprofit or anybody else that does business that way. Our auditors' office had done an audit, they had been begging for the information, they've never received a responsive reply to what they asked for. I'm happy to go and have staff speak to that directly. I am absolutely wholly opposed on any kind of stopgap measure. We just send them money. It doesn't matter if it's $200,000 a month or $100,000 a month, there's no accountability. It can't be the same number of animals every month. Nobody does business that way. You buy widgets, you don't want to know how many widgets you're getting. It's reckless. And if we have to account to our constituents where the money go, we can't. Our auditors don't even know where the money goes. We don't know if money's gone to lobbyists, fundraising, other activities, have nothing to do with animal care, because once it's in their hands and out of our control with no oversight, they can spend it how they will. And I've spoken with procurement, I've spoken with finance, I've spoken with legal, and I've spoken with audit folks yesterday, because this came upon us in a rapid manner. And, you know, they were all in agreement that if this contract, as the one we had before from 2019, were brought to legal today, they would not recommend approval. Procurement would not recommend approval. And, you know, it's wholly irresponsible to do a stopgap measure. We're just going to send you 100 grand or 75 grand or whatever, and, and they're going to send invoice after they get the money? That, that's how, but that's how we've been doing business. What's the point of an invoice if they're going to keep what's left over?
That's not what we're asking to do.
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, that you proposed $100,000 a month.
I did not propose that.
Believe I, because I think I've read that.
I did not propose that. I propose that we come up with an amount, and again, I asked the administrator to look over the document that Ms. Hamm prepared and to come up with an amount, you know, based on the information that we received from the Animal Society. They provided us with numbers, they provided us from 2020 all the way up to 2024 with animals that were in, that were brought in by the animal control officers from the unincorporated areas, et cetera. And he then met with the finance, with Mr. Guile, and then came back with a number. And I said, well, let's talk about that some more, right? So I never came up with a $100,000 number. I said, we took the, the highest number from the last year of whatever information that they provided, and Ms. Hamm and I divided, I explained that to him when we had the conversation. We simply divided it by 12 and came up with a number. And we all agree, meaning Ms. Hamm and I, that, that that was not the number. But we needed to come up with something that would cover at least the animals that were coming. So I never gave a number. Mr. Administrator, are you aware of some estimates that have come from our finance and audit folks as far as what they thought the monthly amount should be?
Actually, the auditor looked at it independently of the CFO, based on the numbers, and it ranged from $34,000 to $40,000.
That's way off from 100,000 or 200,000.
All right, yes, Mr. Sass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'd like to add, and I want to get to that number too, but it, but I want to add that we, we, we did an audit. We also, we, Mr. Stewart and his staff went over there and tried to get numbers from them, and they couldn't get numbers. They couldn't get numbers that they could make sense of. And we had a meeting here with, with CAS and some of their folks, and Mr. Elmore was amazed at the audit. He said, I'll get right back to you. I hadn't seen this. Well, we'd had it about a week. So we, he, we hadn't been sitting on it. We'd had it about a week or two. We gave him the audit, he said, I'll get right back to you. We never heard from him. He never, never responded to the audit that we gave him. Okay. And then the administrator and, the administrator and some of us talked about this, and it's just not, not right for us to be sending them a check, and we're not finding out what we're getting for it. And so Mr. Tooten took the steps that he did, and, and actually in winding up that contract and paying them off, and that's got us to where we are now. We're talking about it. They're here, talking with us about it purely because all those things happened. They wouldn't be talking to us about if we were still sending them $200,000 a month, and they were, I mean, I'm convinced that they're, they're fat and happy on the extra money they make from us, okay? Charleston County itself has a population of less than 15% of people that are not in the three main municipalities, in North Charleston, City of Charleston, and Mount Pleasant. So Charleston County's share of that is probably 15% or something close to that. We know that most of the animals don't come from Charleston County. And frankly, I was amazed at this, this document we got on the 13th, where they sent us information for the last five years of how many animals they've taken in from different places, because they have certainly denied that they had that information. And I'm, I'm sure Mr. Stewart and his staff can back us up on that. We could never get this information from them. They would never give us this information. It's only fair that we pay for the services that we are using. And, and I have to say, I think that in the interim, because the Animal Society has these things called moratoriums, where they close down for a whole week and won't take any, any animals. And so we have no place to go. In the interim, the administrators worked out a deal with pet helpers where we can, where our animal control officers can take animals over there. And they've done it. And they give us a detailed, a detailed report at the end of the month of exactly how many animals they took, what they were, what the officer's name was, and when it was, where it came from. And, and, and I think that's the kind of information that the taxpayers of Charleston County deserve. They deserve to get that kind of information for what we're paying for. And so I think that maybe the real answer is going to be where we work with both of them and not depend on just one.
That's right.
And that might, that might be the real answer. And I know we're not going to get the real answer tonight, but that number is what bothered me. They would not tell us the number. We didn't know if we were overpaying. I mean, I suspected we were overpaying, but I had no way of knowing. And now looking at these numbers, I, I think, I think that we were overpaying.
All right, so we did get the numbers, and you do have access to that. Mr. Darby?
I just want to say, what was so frustrated by Mr. Sass, and rightfully so, but that's the past. This is a new day now. We starting to talk, turn it off fresh. We can't worry about the past because we can't change that. It's where do we go from here? And I, according to my understanding, that the Animal Society has given us everything the county has asked for. So today we supposed to stand anew. And I mean, it's good to know those things. I had not known those things, Mr. Sass. I did not know, sir. But at the same time, if they have made a commitment to give us everything we asked for, surely I think we need to move forward with the assistance of Pet Helpers, sir, because that would help keep prices down. And I don't want anybody to be taken advantage of any government entity by no means. But since we have the numbers now, I like to know what they are, because it may be too high, I don't know. But I like to see and hear for myself, sir.
Ms. Salisbury has gone to print that information. It's been emailed to every council person. She's gone to print it so you could have it in front of you. Mr. Boykin?
Chairman, Mr. Dantoni, I've not been privy to, I guess, contract per se, but I have a question about the contract. Just not try to divulge anything, but I have a concern. Are we putting a requirement in that contract that we will only be responsible for animals brought there by our county ACOs and only residents of unincorporated Charleston County and municipalities other than the, the big three?
That is my understanding.
In this new contract.
Mr. Administrator?
In the new contract that they are, that they just sent back and forth, that is in there.
The, the ACOs, as you will say, Mr. Attorney, that is a contract with Pet Helpers that we have gotten more through them in two months than other things in a couple of years, and that contract will be finalized this week for the ACOs. So the ACOs will not be included in any contract with the Animal Society.
Briefly, so this will be solely for animals delivered to the Charleston Animal Society that reside in unincorporated Charleston County and those municipalities outside the big three.
That is correct. And, Mr. Administrator, you're correct. This doesn't include animal control officers, only citizens of unincorporated Charleston County dropping off animals.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The question is, when is the last time we paid them, and what are they saying we owe them for? How many months do we owe them that they say they were doing services for us?
Mr. Guile sent us a breakdown from the last year that we also did send to you.
Yeah, but I, I got that. So they haven't sent a bill? That's, that's what I'm saying. So until they sent us a bill, then how do we expect, how do we expect to get paid?
Mr. Pryor, also, the contract was terminated.
Yes, sir.
There was a bill that came the next month that, under legal advice, we did not pay because we were not under contract.
Well, how much?
It was their usual $200,000, even though it had been stopped, so.
But, but like Mr. Darby just said, going forward, and this is what, you know, I believe, if, say for instance, they say, well, three months ago they started these animals, if they can provide us a document on how many animals they did, you know, from January up until now, you know, with a, with a brief detail, I don't mind looking at those invoices, but we can't pay them without an invoice. Even though we didn't have a contract, they still provided service. And I, you know, and I want to, you know, and let's be perfectly clear, you know, I don't expect them to do it for nothing, but it's not going to be just a $100,000, $200,000 check. So if they took in 100 animals, send me a bill for what they took in, what's the cost? We let staff look at it, and if staff think it's appropriate, then they can bring it before us or the administrator, and we can pay it. But we have to have an itemized bill before we move forward. So there's no need, and to me, discussing and discussing until they send us an itemized bill that we asked them to broken down, and then it comes back to us to look at, and if we agree they need to be paid, I don't mind paying them back for the last couple of months. And then moving forward with the new contract they're looking at, if that's what we want to do, along with Pet Helpers, that's fine, we can negotiate that.
Any other, yes, Mr. Moody?
This, maybe wanted to offer something, a glass half-full scenario, and that's, that's somebody mentioned, our partnership with Pet Helpers. You know, if you haven't had a chance to visit with Carol Lindville, you're missing an opportunity. She is a wonderful, wonderful woman. Her organization has done great things. When we engage them, people badmouth them, say they're too small, they can't handle it, they couldn't do the job, they couldn't record-keep. What have they done? Everything, everything we've asked of them and more. So I, I want to thank, you know, this, this discussion I think is good because it has brought light onto the, what I think is the fleecing that has happened to this county the last number of years. And, you know, Pet Helpers, wouldn't you know it, was able to send one invoice with about two dozen worksheets. As Mr. Sass said, we know where every animal came from, we know what they did to it, they know, we know how they treated it. There was a number to the right side of what they There was a number to the right side of what they charged for that animal, and it all reconciled to one invoice. In December was fifteen thousand dollars. January was eight thousand dollars, and we put some money in there to help expand the place because of our relationship. So, I think Mr. Tooten pointed out, we paid them a hundred thousand dollars in two-plus months, which is one-half of the undocumented nonsense we used to get. That's incredible, and kudos to Pet Helpers for their willingness to step up and help this county. And I, and to have them as a partner going forward, that's somebody I trust and somebody I want to do business with. But wonderful job by Carol Linville and her crew. Thanks, sir.
All right, anyone else? Yes, Ms. Honeycutt?
Just to add in, and I was listening to the full discussion, I wanted to make clear that in our discussions, when we discuss this issue, I was very clear that I was not entering another stopgap or interim agreement, that I am willing to partner with the Charleston Animal Society when they come to us with an agreement. And if we want to make it really simple, we should do exactly what we're doing with Pet Helpers, which is hold them to the exact same standard. They provide the exact same service. And so, I don't see why we're negotiating this when we have a relationship that works very well, that quite frankly, sets the standard and, and to the benefit of our taxpayers. So, my position is, I do not intend to support any additional monies going to Charleston Animal Society until we have an agreement in place that outlines the amount they're charging, what they're charging for, and an agreement going forward. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we are.
Are we not waiting for the figures before we end the discussion?
Yeah, she is working on that.
I think we should at least have those.
Yeah, those figures were already sent and emailed over a week ago. We will continue this conversation if there is a desire to do so. We're going to start our county council meeting right away. Let's have the public hearings.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at six-thirty regarding an ordinance amending and repealing certain sections of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances to remove outdated sections and conform with current practice.
Any speakers? Oh, I'm sorry. We had a lot of moving parts going. Thank you so much, Ms. Worser and Mr..
We have one person, Anthony G. Bryant.
Pleasure. I really wanted to come for that one. I think it kind of set, set the situation up in terms of what I just heard, old business. And what I was told years ago when I served was a former council is not responsible the last council, no matter how many times you served. So, you have to actually have a, a memory has to be gone. So, you know, what was said by the senior councilperson who's been there for quite some time, that, you know, your memory just got to go. It comes with the parliamentary rules and procedures. And I think a lot of the old ordinances in terms of the municipalities you talked about, and in terms of those relationships you talked about, need to be really changed. I was at city council meeting, City of Charleston, and they had a community development meeting about the very, very low income. Now, you're gonna, you got a zero-based property, Marston Drive, zero-zero, right? They got zero, meaning they don't pay taxes. So, Marston Drive didn't pay you any taxes, okay? So, therefore, you got three housing authorities. You got Northern Housing Authority, City of Charleston Housing Authority, County Housing Authority. Why not just give them the property? Let them all come back, bring the plan together, very low income, low income, middle income, whatever. A union pensionist be given a devaro now, zero basis. He bring a plan back, because when you put, when you sell a property like that, it's zero basis. You say thirty-something million dollars, you take that, you upper-middle income. You got to justify that, that, that cost of buying that land. So, the government's in the business of the public interest. Naval Base redevelopment, same thing. It's in the public interest. It should be the public first, then the private sector. You want to buy private property, go buy private property. But don't want statewide bids and impose their will on you to deal with the problem. That is old business. We need to start some new business.
All right, that is it for that one.
All right, one D.
The next one is, notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM regarding an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of utility easement to Dominion Energy South Carolina, Inc. on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number four-one-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-two, located at thirty-seven sixty-five Leeds Avenue.
Anyone signed up?
Mr. Bryant.
All right, Ms. Bryant.
I made public comment in this building, the Public Service Commission, about rate increases. I made it in twenty-twelve, twenty-sixteen. I made it with Dominion Energy when it was SC and G and their debacle. You know, I understand these easements are very important, but at the end of the day, their stock price is a certain amount, and they, they make a lot of money, right? And so, at the end of the day, the state of South Carolina is putting together this VC summer again. You bring economic development, Boeing, this one, that one, and where's, where's the power coming from? Google and Dorchester County, I'm not against economic development, I was against the fair share being spread. Rover St. Francis Hospital, they don't pay no taxes. MUSC don't pay no taxes. The school board don't pay no taxes. But they, they assume that we, we think the eighty-five billion dollars come in, and we can't even see or find that. This is new business. Where we've grown, when you, when you grow a society, it's a different type of, we are looking at. You are grown, and you got to get a haircut a certain kind of way, you got to get a certain kind of suit, all kinds of stuff. So, Charleston County has grown, and so, we have to be able to talk, look at things a little differently. We got, we've grown, we're not growth, we're grown. And so, I hope that Dominion Energy, other corporations that you work with operate in good faith in terms of their stewardship and their goodwill. In my opinion, it's not enough based upon my engagement with them legitimately and in terms of the General Assembly and their lack of understanding how this thing really, really works for local folk. The very low income in Charleston County, I say by 2040, will not exist in Charleston County. In 2040, we'll be at about five percent, the peninsula we got right now, and the peninsula, and the whole county at five percent, I believe in 2040. And hopefully, I'll be good and dead.
All right, public comments?
Mr. Bryant, and we have eleven people signed up.
Let's get in this real quick about this Black History Month, and I heard this. You speak at this cha, in this chamber now, the sheriff, it's forty-six sheriffs in Charleston in the state of South Carolina and one governor. The sheriff has more power than the governor. I want to be very clear with public safety in terms of lynching, okay? A congressman out of Berkeley County was on the floor of Congress stating, he's talking about rape, domestic violence, human trafficking, and everything else. But you miss a point. You missed the history of lynching. That goes hand in hand. When you make that accusation about someone beating a woman, or beating a man, or, or, or raping somebody, think about George Steady, fourteen years old, youngest black man executed in South Carolina for allegation of rape. I don't care about popularity. I'm not running for mayor or US Senator, nothing. I, I remember a friend of mine, Scott Wilson, had played football with me in two thousand eighty-nine, was, he said, he didn't rape anybody. And we all know, we all played ball with him. We came to conclusion that all of us were raped, just through our association. And so, at the end of the day, that's my reality as an athlete. My whole life, well, you got to worry about a white woman saying something about you doing something her wrong. You had one of the most powerful white women in the history of Charleston, went to Citadel, erected on Denmark Veezy, and he was a Presbyterian. My family's Presbyterian. I always knew that Denmark Veezy was a Presbyterian, to get that straight. But at, at the end of the day, thirty-something people was on the lines, hung because of that. They forgot them on the lines. It's Black History Month. Jimmy the Stone O' Rebellion, you know, we talking Nat Turner, you know, we talking Denmark Veezy. That's Black History Month. That's why I got free resistance. I didn't get free with accommodations, black people trying to find a rate, a reason to understand slavery, Jim Crow. So, you'll have a nice Black History Month.
Next is Martin Levinson, followed by Matt Colburn.
My name is Martin Levinson. I reside at seventeen seventy-one Oakl Avenue, that's in West Ashley. I would like to begin this, my two minutes, by recognizing Reverend Middleton and Mr. Werman for taking time out of their schedule to be able to meet with our coalition and begin some discussion about the dilemma of Elbit Systems. I hope that going forward, we can expand that to be able to, to include all of the council members. So, I've been thinking an awful lot lately about my mom and dad. My dad was a World War II veteran. He served in the Pacific as a bomber navigator, and when he died in nineteen ninety-eight, years later, my mom and I would sit and reminisce an awful lot. So, eventually, I got to the question, the question of, Mom, what was going on in America? What did people know? How were they reacting to the fact that six million Jews were being forced into incarceration and being exterminated in the Holocaust? And my mom said, "I don't know. We didn't hear about it." And I was stunned. I couldn't believe that the live stream of information that we get today was nothing like what they had in terms of awareness in those days. So, I did some research, and what I found was that she wasn't completely right. There were corporations then, American corporations, like Ford and GM, that were making quite a tidy sum off of equipping the Nazi Third Reich. And they were doing it. That was two minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt Colburn, L. Nigels.
Matt Colburn, thirty-eight twelve West Montague Avenue. Today in nineteen ninety-four, twenty-nine Palestinians praying in a mosque in Hebron during Ramadan were slaughtered by an American Zionist. This did not start on October seventh. Palestinians continue to be slaughtered in a genocide, and that's why we're here today. Also, wanted to thank two council members, Middleton and Werman, for meeting with us and engaging in good faith with us, and hope the rest of you council members can also do the same. Wanted to speak, though, on how Elbit's continued existence leaves a moral stain on this county and makes it complicit in war crimes and genocide. Again, this isn't some ideological debate. The ICC, ICJ, and numerous respected human rights organizations have documented war crimes and genocide being committed on the Palestinian people by the Israelis. Its current prime minister said Gaza was a city of evil. Its former minister of defense said Palestinians were human animals. They both have ICC warrants for war crimes of starvation and murder. Its current finance minister said it may be morally acceptable to starve a million people, and its former national security minister had a picture of this killer on his wall, who killed these Muslims in a mosque, by the way, who was convicted by an Israeli court of incitement to racism and supporting terrorism. Also said how it is acceptable to murder women and children. We should shoot Palestinian prisoners in the head, you know? And this is who Elbit and Laston is the subset area of, right? And we cannot and will not allow the county of Charleston to be complicit in genocide, right? So, council members, please accept this olive branch, right? This is a moral crisis. It is a, it is a, it's more than a moral crisis, right? We are trying to work in good faith to resolve this, but we cannot and will not be complicit in the genocide of the Palestinian people. We are here because states have failed to act, but we will not be deterred. We will continue until Palestine is freed from the river to the sea. Thank you.
L. Nigel, Erica Veal.
I'm a Clemson engineering student. I'm studying civil and chemical engineering. I'm doing so because I'm the daughter of an immigrant, and I want stability. Some of my family is Palestinian. My auntie runs a homeless shelter in Denver. Her father and siblings are in Gaza. They have been displaced, and I have spent the last couple of months combing through TikToks, watching what Elbit weapons are doing. I've spent time looking for them in videos of refugee camps, searching for their familiar faces, and praying that they are alive and that I can find them. And occasionally, I will be watching a video, somebody in a refugee camp, and a bomb will explode in the background. And some of those bombs are made by Elbit. I hope that, as an engineering student, we know that Elbit does other things. Elbit is not just engineering weapons. They do medical stuff. They do things that make engineers proud, and we can support Elbit in that mission. We don't have to run Elbit out. We just have to say that we don't let them make weapons here. They can do it in other places, but why don't we let them make their, their medical technologies, the things that make us proud here? We don't have to kick them out. We just have to say that they aren't allowed to pursue the suffering of people here. They can find other states and other cities who will let them do that, and we can keep the benefits of their medical and engineering benefits here. Thank you for your time.
Would you state your name?
My name is Eli Nagib.
Thank you. Erica Veal, Chris Tittle.
My name is Erica Veal, and I'm a resident of West Ashley. And thank you, Councilmen Middleton and Werman, for meeting with us earlier. For the rest of the council, I'm here tonight to urge you to recognize both the humanity of Palestinians and the Gullah Gichi community. According to the Racial Disparities Report that was published by the College of Charleston in twenty-seventeen, the Gullah Gichi community suffers from the worst racial disparities in the country as it relates to health care and housing and education and access to quality childcare, jobs, infrastructure, policing, and the gentrification that the Gullah Gichi community is experiencing currently has been compared to ethnic cleansing. And in the last fifteen months, we've seen tens of thousands of Palestinians, most of whom are children unjustly killed by Israeli forces using weapons that are being manufactured in Charleston County. This makes our community complicit in the suffering and genocide of Palestinians, and that's completely unacceptable. As our elected officials, I expect you to do nothing less than ensure that Elbit's Latson facility be shut down. It's a slap in the face to Charleston County, to green light tax breaks for an Israeli-owned weapons manufacturer in our backyard, using tax dollars to fund genocide and ethnic cleansing abroad, while Gullah Gichi people suffer from a slow genocide and ethnic cleansing at home due to the neglect on the part of the local government. Our tax dollars should be funding access to quality health care, better schools, affordable housing, and not bombing the health care systems and schools and homes of Palestinians just because of some Zionist myth about some ancestral homeland that has nothing to do with religion and everything to do with capitalist greed. Shut down Elbit, free Palestine, and liberate the Low Country.
Chris Tittle, Adam Waddell.
My name is Chris Tittle. I'm a member of, resident of District Six. I'm also a parent. My son turns five this week. He'll be starting kindergarten at Stono Park Elementary in the fall. Two-hundred-and-seven million dollars. That's how much money the Charleston County School District has lost in revenue since twenty-seventeen as a result of agreements that this council has made in the form of fee-in-lieu of taxation agreements and other obscure-sounding ways of giving away our public money to private corporations. This has had serious consequences on our school system in the form of teacher shortages, failing infrastructure, a lack of adequate learning technology for our students. And where has that money gone? Two-hundred million dollars. Well, in one case, we know it has gone into the billion-dollar balance sheet of a private company called Elbit Systems of America. Y'all have heard of it at this point. They're Israel's largest private weapons manufacturer. They also are one of the largest providers of surveillance technology that's being used in this country to surveil and harass immigrants. And what they're producing are weapons that have been used to destroy ninety percent of Gaza's school system, let alone the killing of tens of thousands of mostly women and children. This single-fila agreement has contributed to the outright destruction of Gaza's school system, as well as the intentional defunding of our own school system here. We expect better of that from our elected representatives, and we're grateful that some of you have agreed to meet with us and work in good faith. We look forward to continuing. We look forward to continuing that. I stand with the hundreds of my neighbors here in Charleston County in calling for an end to this agreement with Elbit Systems and for Elbit to leave our community full stop. Free Palestine.
Autumn Waddell, Alfred Peeler.
Hello. My name is Autumn Waddell. I'm...I live in District 9. I'm here with Elbit out of S.T. Coalition, and I would like to take the time to thank Reverend Middleton and Councilman Werman for taking the time to meet with us and for your commitments. I look forward to continuing to work with you. And I would also like to reiterate an invitation to the other council members, specifically my representative, to work with us. I would like to believe you share our values of transparency, education, human rights, and strong communities. I hope you'll do everything in your power to correct the mistake you made in entering a contract with a harmful weapons manufacturer involved in decades of war crimes by terminating this agreement with Elbit Systems. I ask you to listen to me, your constituent, as well as the hundreds of other Charleston County teachers, voters, parents, health care workers, and lifelong Charleston residents who want Elbit out of our community. Thank you.
Alfred Peeler, Matt Mossberg.
Hey, council members. I'm Alfred Peeler with Elbit out of S.T. Coalition. I'm at 1133 Arthur Drive. I also wanted to express thanks to Councilmen Middleton and Werman for meeting with us and agreeing to work in good faith. But I do have some concerns about some things that have been said during public comments by residents, as well as some council members. So, a few weeks ago, it was suggested that Elbit Systems, an international weapons manufacturer, and its employees are actually the real victims, and we who picket them are the real threat. As somebody who has been purposely hit by an employee's car, I've seen employees hold up numbers on their fingers when we ask them how many kids they killed today. I've seen organizers threatened with jail time for peacefully rallying. And just last week, an Elbit employee did this to my wife. I'm making a gesture of cutting the throat. This idea that Elbit is a victim is bananas. It's bizarro. It's crazy to suggest such a thing. The same resident stood up here saying that we were lying about tax money subsidizing Elbit to the detriment of our schools. But as you've heard a little bit today, the Post and Courier recently put out a piece referencing a study showing that this county's schools lost over $207 million from 2017 to 2023. That's tax breaks given to corporations. We've been criticized by council for ignoring October 7th when we come in here. But I wanted to point out that our coalition's...one of the things we do is we hold public teach-ins, and we attach a great history...or a great importance to this history in discussing October 7th. And we will make sure to invite every council member here to our next one so that you can hear a little bit about and learn about the 100 years of ethnic cleansing, apartheid, settler colonialism, kidnapping, and other forms of violent counterinsurgency waged against Palestinians on their land that led up to October 7th. Just to be clear, we're not the ones hiding from history, and we're happy to invite everybody here to our public teach-ins when we discuss this. Thank you.
Matt Mossberg, Phil Lowry.
Good evening, council members. Matt Mossberg, 15th America Street. Been a resident of Charleston for a good while. Again, I'd like to extend my gratitude to the council members who were present with us, and we definitely look forward to holding you all accountable to the commitments that you made in our discussions. I just want to point out, I don't know if everyone's aware, as was mentioned earlier, there have been ICJ rulings and ICC warrants issued regarding the war crimes being committed by the Israeli government. Recently, it's also been a lawsuit brought to the ICC to hold the Biden administration accountable for their responsibility because for this last 16, however, many months, they have been the administration that's been providing sales, funding. And Elbit is one of those companies that is providing these weapons through these sales contracts. And so, it will be sooner or later that the world justice system comes to bear on the people who are culpable for allowing these sorts of injustices to go on and allowing, basically, violation of international and national law while we are supporting a genocide, while the current administration is casually and vocally discussing permanently resettling, displacing the population of Gaza, allowing the Israeli government to encroach on the West Bank, which is complete violation of international law. And the public is not going to deal with it for very much longer. But again, we look forward to continued conversations with everyone. Thank you.
Phil Lowry, Marcus McDonald.
Evening, County Council. Phil Lowry, 1528 Ross Spottway, Charleston, South Carolina, member of Mr. Middleton's district. So, you guys have heard my run here, so I'm going to switch it up a little bit. I did notice on the lobby that today we're recognizing and celebrating Black History. And so, I put some thought into that when I saw that. And I want to share some quotes from some of my personally favorite human beings and people that I look to for guidance, support, and my North Star. "Prison anywhere is a threat to freedom everywhere," MLK. "If you are neutral in times of injustice, you've chosen the side of the oppressor," Desmond Tutu. "Nothing is more important than stopping fascism because fascism is going to stop us all," Fred Hampton. "You're not to be so blind with patriotism that you can't face reality. Wrong is wrong, no matter who does it or says it," Malcolm X. You'll notice that 3/4 of these speakers were assassinated by the state. Here today, speaking out against the brazen slaughter of the Palestinian people, Elbit Systems is a fundamental part of this ethnic cleansing. I have said it before, and I'm going to keep saying it until you hear me. Elbit out of South Carolina is the bare minimum. Rest in power Martin Luther King, Desmond Tutu, Fred Hampton, Malcolm X, Free Palestine, Congo, Sudan, and all oppressed people all over the world. Thank you.
Marcus McDonald.
Hello. My name is Marcus McDonald. I'm lead organizer of Charleston Black Lives Matter. Happy Black History Month. I'm here pissed off because, as y'all know, Palestine right by Africa, and I am a Christian. I don't know if y'all know where Jesus was from, but that's another reason I care about it. Some of y'all saw the Pope's Christmas celebration. He also highlighted Jesus in that. One thing I will say, too, there was a council member who left. I encourage him to come back. You're a council member for everybody, even when people disagree with you. And you said a lot to the media against a lot of people. And if you're willing to say a lot of those things, I wish you would be here to listen to some of these people. Y'all talked budget earlier. How clear y'all on Elbit's budget? Y'all worried about these animal society budget? How clear y'all on missiles is killing people? I think that's a little bit more than a dog carrier. Black History Month, 1869. Police got their guns taken away, not because they were white, but because they are inflicting harm and death upon Black Charlestonians. Because the first police here were the slave patrol, and they got their guns taken away when the federal government started reconstruction. Federal government made a right decision then in taking the guns away from people who were killing people in Charleston, in the South Carolina. Matter of fact, that's the only reason why there's not more black people in the city and in the state, because there's kept... There's been continuous genocide for black people in the city up until 2415, when they went to my great grandmother church. And I know all y'all know about that. But that has led to where we see a lot of black people moving away from the South because of all the killing and death. So, if we can do something right as an American Charleston County, it could be to look at what's happening in another country and stop what's happening, do make the right decision on taking these weapons away and putting some type of guidelines on this country. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, Mr. Pryor will lead us in our prayer. Oh, Freedom of Information Act. I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Pryor will lead us in the prayer. And Deion Brown from the International...from the Internal Audit Department, is a graduate of Class IV Emerging Leaders, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you, and as always, we invite your holy presence. We ask you to come in on tonight, guide us, give us what to say, how to say as we conduct business with the people of Charleston County. We pray for all of our elected officials from the national, the state, and local governments. We ask you to guide their thoughts and touch their hearts to make the right decisions. We thank you for our military men and women who serve us throughout the world, throughout the United States. Continue to bless all of our first responders. Bless our workers in Charleston County. Bless this council and their family. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted. Addendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Number 11, meeting properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. The ayes have it. A third reading of ordinances, 3A.
An ordinance amending Section 2-126 and repealing Section 2-127 of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances to provide for continuity of operations and to conform with current administrative positions. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby. Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
3B.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy South Carolina Incorporated on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number 412000012, located at Leeds Avenue and Brickyard Creek Road, North Charleston, South Carolina 29405. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
4, second reading of ordinances, 4A.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1118 Carver Wood Lane, totaling approximately 0.18 acres, parcel identification number 3150600194 to Narrow Gate Development. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
4B, Charleston Home, Phase 4.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 5317 Alvey Street, totaling approximately 0.22 acres, parcel identification number 4080800282 to Carolina Dream Builders Incorporated. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt. Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
4C, the property at 6992 Vista Court.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 6992 Vista Court, totaling approximately 0.33 acres, parcel identification number 4781500109 to Carolina Dream Builders Incorporated. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
4D, the property located at 3989 Paramount Drive.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 3989 Paramount Drive, totaling approximately 0.2 acres, parcel identification number 410100030 to Caldwell Keiner LLC. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
4E, the property located at 4828 Foxwood Drive.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 4828 Foxwood Drive, totaling approximately 0.26 acres, parcel identification number 4040800212 to J.W. Construction and Design Company LLC. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
4F, fiscal year 25 budget ordinance amendment for special-purpose districts.
An ordinance to amend the 2024-2025 budget ordinance number 2296 to provide for the increase of St. Paul's Fire District's general fund budget by appropriating an additional $584,699 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, here and after referred to as fiscal year 2025, to provide for budgetary control of said appropriations by the county council and the county administrator and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin.
Aye.
Mr. Darby.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Pryor.
Aye.
Mr. Sasse.
Aye.
Mr. Werman.
Aye.
Mr. Middleton.
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
57, agenda. A through I.
Mr. Pryor, might we separate 5F?
5F? Yes, okay. That's all A, A through I with a separation of 5F.
All right, we're probably moved and seconded. 5A through E, G through I. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Ayes have it, 5F.
For approval.
Probably moved and seconded. All those...well, is there discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay.
Nay.
All right.
Move for approval on 6A.
6A, thank you so much. It has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Ayes have it. All right, we will move into council comments at this time. Mr. Werman. All right, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the discussion. I know we only had 30 minutes. I've got a lot more to say about this, including my financial analysis, which is a lot of fun. We'll have some fun poking around the numbers and seeing how things stack up because it's a telling story. And it's a good-for-them story, maybe not good-for-us story. So, when this comes back, I'll have a lot more to say, but I appreciate you having a discussion about it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Mr. Sasse.
Nothing for you tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Boykin.
I'm the North Star.
Thank you so much. Ms. Honeycutt.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure all members of council had an opportunity to see the RFQ and ask when the RFQ will be put out.
Not aware that we have a date. If council is ready, I don't know if it requires a vote of council to put it out. We will work with the administrator to tell us to put it out.
Excellent.
RFQ for?
The one we've been talking about for the information presentation for the transportation program.
Yeah, I would like that to come before council, you know, and before just...
I do believe it's scheduled to come on our agenda on March 6th.
Yeah, it has to come before council, yeah, because I just want to really put something out without us discussing it.
All right, so Ms. Honeycutt was requesting an RFQ. We bounced it to staff, you know, to put that together. They've been working on our, at least we, you know, kind of instructed them to work on that, and she was asking again, when will it come before council? The RFQ would be for transportation activities, awareness, and...
For anyone that wants to see it, it's available. I'm assuming the chair has seen it.
No, they're still working on it. So in our meeting on last week, I did meet with staff, and they said that they were still working on it, and so...
It needs to be set up, yes.
All right, so we'll see it tomorrow. Not yet seen it. Thank you so much. Mr. Pryor.
Just thank you to everybody, but Ms. Honeycutt, I left the house and I saw you send an email out requiring all of the chairman's emails.
Mr. Pryor has the floor.
All of the council emails, so...
No, sir, just letters sent on behalf of council as chair. Anything where he's voicing the will of council in his role as chairman. I think there have been three that were produced without any question.
So I will say, you know, prior to just giving general comments, that number one, I was completely, totally offended by the email, let me say that first, in the sense that when anybody else has been chair of this council, we've never received anything that you all have sent, articulated, contemplated, or produced to anyone outside of this council ever. And when I spoke with Ms. Salisbury, she said it's not even been practiced. Now, if Mr. Tooten, Ms. Hamm, Ms. Salisbury were to remember and be able to say, when we had our first meeting, I said to them, anything that we discuss, in fact, there was supposed to be a blue sheet at one point, then I just started putting things out, that we should give to all of council because all of council should be privy to any information that at least we are working on as, you know, our team when we meet on Wednesdays and anything that comes out. Anything that I have sent out, I've sent out based on a reason. And so as it relates to the letter that was sent to Secretary Powell relative to the invoices, that was a direct response to my meeting with Chairman White, and the CIB was also requesting the same thing and advised us, along with our attorney, you were on the same meeting, to send the letter. And so as consensus, and the attorney needed that information based on other actions that we are trying to do right now, we all agreed to send that so we could get the invoice, period. As it relates to the letter that was sent to the Animal Society, that was in direct relation to the meeting that we had and after I spoke with council persons, including you, who then, as you articulated earlier, saying that there should be no stopgap because those last years were the stopgap, but there were other things that other council persons, meaning the majority of people that I talked to, said that if they do these things, then we could still have some additional thoughts on what to do moving forward. So we sent that letter forward. But there is nothing that I'm sending out on behalf of anybody, certainly not myself, that has not been directed by the will of this council. And so in many conversations that you and I've personally had, I've updated you, I've advised you based on the RFQ when I meet on Wednesdays, and they tell me, the administrator himself says, no, this is not ready. And so they provided at least feedback, and I presented those to you, and so it's not my personal desire to keep things off. When I'm advised, then I advise the council persons based on their requests, based on what staff, the administrator, the attorney, others have then said. So I take great offense, let me say that, because I have been extremely transparent. I have communicated either through texts, calls, emails with all of you to the extent that some of you refuse to communicate. If that's the posture or the position that you choose to take, I could care less because I still wish to engage this entire council. And I wish that at some point, whatever is going on, it would stop. And so when I consulted with Ms. Salisbury, never has such a request come under any chair, and I'm telling you, at some point, whatever it is, put it on the table. Let's have an open conversation and move forward because all of these little undercurrent things are absolutely counterproductive to moving forward. I said, even in our conversation, I talked to you almost all the way coming from Columbia when I left the chairman's workshop on last week, because when I met with Chairman Powell, he mentioned to me that you talked to him on Monday. I had no clue that you talked to him on Monday, nor do I have to have a clue that you talked to him at any point, at any juncture in your talkings to anybody. But he articulated that he only speaks to the chair and only speaks to the administrator as it relates to the official whatever of county council. I have been resolute, any persons, including the group that came tonight, that wish to meet with me, it is a public schedule, they go through Ms. Salisbury. I don't have clandestine meetings, I don't set them up myself, she works with my administrative assistant, and they line those meetings up. I even invite y'all. And so at the same token, I wish that we would come to a place that we can talk and not work around. And so I wanted to at least note that based on the email.
Thank you. And in response, I would say, my my, thou doth protest too much. I am only asking because in our hour-long conversation, you never mentioned that you sent a letter to Chairman Powell, and so I was curious when a letter came back from him in response to a letter we hadn't seen and you hadn't mentioned what that letter was about. And so I was simply asking, can we see what you are sending folks on our behalf? We also learned in that request that you have exchanged letters, or at least sent one to the mayor about 9:95, had a meeting, was that today, I think? Would love to know what's going on. I am always willing to speak with you, I am willing to text, I am willing to call. I hope to keep that door open, but I'm not sure that I understand exactly what is going on.
Right here at this council, I invited you all to the meeting today. As a result, Mr. Warman came, Mr. Sasse came, Ms. Salisbury even sent another email out to all of council, let me know if y'all are coming. I then chimed in saying Mr. Sasse told me after council meeting he's coming. So at some point, the truth is the truth. Now, did you all not receive the same invitation? Did I not articulate right here from this council dais that we were meeting on the 25th?
I've asked to meet him.
Okay, all right, so I guess not.
I just want us to be very careful and transparent because, you know, we shouldn't be trying to micromanage. I mean, the chairman should share that information once everybody gets the information. You may not like it, or you may not agree with it, but we shouldn't behind, you know, when I saw the email, you know, I called him up and said, what is this all about? Because I was taken back, you know, and I started to call you, I said, but I wait till I time for the meeting, you know, and I would ask you, you know, why such an email? Why not just pick up the phone and call somebody? But moving forward, let us all work together for the better of the county. It's not about individuals, it's not about personalities. I don't want us to end up like the school board used to be, every time you come here, you know, there's an argument, because I won't be such, I won't be part of such, you know, embarrassment. But, you know, if you've got something, call him out. You know, me and you talk, when you've got something, you call me.
Absolutely.
When I was chair, I was open to everybody, but everybody couldn't come into all the meetings because some meetings, you know, people call and have a request, but you would get updated on it. So if people are wanting updates on meetings, I'm sure the chairman doesn't mind having the clerk send out an update, or he can do it from the dais up here, but let us all work together in the same spread of unity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we just had the meeting today, and I'm poised to provide updates because there are updates, but it was just today.
You can call them individually, I either sent out the email, not tonight.
Oh, I did. I texted.
Yeah, but I'm not tonight.
All right, are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
I'm talking with Ms. Honeycutt.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Mr. Darby.
We're going to retreat.
The escape room, Mr. Darby. We're going to an escape room together.
Okay, all right. That's it, sir.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Kabrowski.
Say that, you know, everybody has First Amendment free speech rights, so I also have them, and the reason I left is this past week, you know, when they returned the hostages of the babies, Hamas had strangled the babies, killed them themselves, they killed the 89-year-old man, and the here public supports of what I consider terrorism, and I'm glad that the Jewish people have the means to defend themselves. Any sovereign government that has any meaning or purpose would go after those who rape their women, put their babies in oven, cut the babies' heads off, take babies and children, keep them underground. I heard no, nothing tonight from those people. I listened outside, but I don't have to listen to that, to those. My family came to America to escape people where we were in Eastern Europe, where they lived, the people who wanted to murder, kill us, didn't treat us as human beings, and I don't have to listen to it. But thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kabrowski, fill-in attorney, Deantonio.
Nothing from me.
Thank you so much. Mr. Administrator.
Nothing except he's going to hear "fill-in attorney" several times in the future.
All right, so just wanted to note, just as a correction, in my speaking on the last time we had a council meeting, I did ask a question about the Historic Charleston Foundation when we looked at the list of awardees and some of whom operated museums and that sort of thing, and I said, well, I don't think they operate a museum. Well, Lisa Jones, Director of Advocacy, did reach out to me, and she reminded me that the Historic Charleston Foundation operates two house museums, the Aiken Red House and the Nathaniel Russell House. So I wanted to at least note that because when I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and so I wanted to note the fact that they do operate two museums and did not want to sully, you know, the work of the Historic Charleston Foundation. The last thing, you know, I did attend the chairman's workshop on our seminar, our certification course on last week, and found it to be extremely informative and shaping, and I really look forward to working with everyone for the remainder of the year, recognizing that if we work together, if we forge our path, our collective priorities and agenda moving forward, then all of Charleston County benefits. So again, we will have the Joint Bond Review Committee meeting on March 25th. Let me just say that again, on March 25th, the Joint Bond Review Committee meets. We don't have any grand plans to go, but as the weeks ensue, they will let us know because there will be an item, if not on the agenda, at least to be dealt with as it relates to Charleston County on that meeting. And after that meeting, for many, and I do know I've had this conversation with many council persons who are eager and anxious to talk about things relative to transportation,[1705.11]